Live, live. Oh, live.
I'm a little slow sometimes.
Where am I?
Lot of process, but.
A lot of. Cleaning up to.
Mr. Bush.
Dog. You want. That's. Got it.
Oh, are we ready? Wonder what you know. What if I've been passed? No. Just a personal agenda one, right? One that she's on. Yeah. So that would be what? Twenty-eight? Yeah. Is that where she's listening? Yeah, twenty-eight. Yeah. Mm-hmm. I'll recuse you.
I recall the committee of the whole meeting for.
I know mine doesn't either.
Okay, we're going to call to order the Franklin Regional School Board of Directors for the Committee of the Whole Meeting for October four, August fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Uh, we're in executive session for personnel and legal issues tonight from seven, six-thirty until twenty-five after seven, and we have a superintendent's report.
Before I start my report, I'm actually going to have the solicitor talk about a change in the agenda for tonight.
Yes, we will be modifying the, or asking for a motion to modify the agenda to include in action item twenty-nine, which is the personnel agenda, the following: approval of a charred rearing leave for employee number four, five, 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 a middle school employee effective for the first semester of the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. So that would be included, included in action item number twenty-nine, and if this way would give the public any opportunity to speak on that matter if they would like to. I would need a motion to that effect.
Thank you.
I'll motion to.
Second.
Think you're supposed to call roll call, Donna.
I am. Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
No, no, we're going yes or no. This is change the agenda.
To modify the agenda.
Yes or no?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not here.
I'm sorry. I heard you say call to order. Yes. Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Yant? He's not here, sorry. Mr. Mederator?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Alteri Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Yingling?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do actually, we did not call the roll.
We don't.
We don't for that. On the agenda, though, so we should be doing that.
Call to order, not call the roll.
You still have to know what board members are there, so it's on our agenda to call to order.
Where?
It should be call the roll. We still have to know what board members are present at a workshop meeting, so it should be documented in our minutes. So in the future, we can change that.
We'll certainly do that. I can call roll now if you'd like.
We'll call that, yes.
Mr. Kuzlosky?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Mr. Krimsky?
Here.
Mr. Yant is absent. Mr. Mederator?
Here.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Here.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Here.
Mr. Yingling?
Here.
Anything else, Dr. Pirado?
I actually have a couple, couple of things. I'm going to start off by thanking the administrative team for their efforts this summer. We are, uh, we had my, a great extent of our hiring done, uh, in the month of June, which is very rare, uh, in, in a school system, especially at a time when, when there's a tremendous shortage of, of teachers across, across the country and across the Commonwealth. Uh, we're still in the process of interviewing for a special education position, uh, but we have hired some, some great teachers and, uh, really look forward to having them become part of the Franklin Regional family. And so I want to thank our administrators for their efforts to go out and, and search for candidates, uh, engage in job fairs as well as other marketing, marketing efforts, uh, as it relates to finding the best. And as well as it, the last three, three days, we've had new teacher orientation where our administrators have been facilitating sessions with our new teachers, and the dialogue, the discourse, and the engagement has been tremendous. And so I want to take this opportunity to thank all of them, uh, for their efforts this summer. I also want to take an opportunity to thank our maintenance and facilities folks, uh, for their efforts. If you walk around our campus, we are now in mid-August and it looks like we're two days away from the start of school. I mean, they, they did a tremendous job. We had a number of things going on, but, but really the condition of our campuses have really come together, and so I appreciate them and all of their work as well. So I, I just want to take an opportunity to, to, to thank them publicly. And we are excited and ready to welcome students back next Wednesday. Our teachers come Thursday for our kickoff event, our opening day for teachers, but all in preparation for, for what we have coming up next week. And so looking forward to seeing, uh, our why for why we are here, uh, coming into our buildings and, and engaging in learning. So thank you to everyone, and we look forward to seeing our students next week. That concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, uh, we're going to public comments. Stanley. No, he signed up second. Can you do that? You have a problem with that? Thanks, Gary.
Counsel, um, I'm here, I'm here to ask counsel. I'm sorry, my name is Raymond.
Last name and address.
And my address is one-two-two Manor Road, Delmont, Pennsylvania. All right, I'm asking the, the board here to consider funding an activity bus for our high school students. This bus could potentially, if it's enacted, could potentially be used by both the high school students and the middle school students because they're on the same campus. We have multiple families in our district that have multiple kids in multiple activities, and sometimes it's almost impossible for the families to pick up kids from different locations. Technology today could actually identify the route and stop numbers for these kids or whoever has to use this particular activity bus. I believe that what's happening now because of the parents in our area that are working, we're excluding students that can't actually stay for an act, for a school activity because there's no ride home. They either have to rely on a grandparent, maybe a friend, or something like that. Once again, inclusivity is one of my things is that, you know, you're excluding these poor kids that don't have a ride back home. I graduated from Churchill High School in nineteen sixty-seven. There was an activity bus for me. I was on a track team, I was on a cross-country team. If we stayed late, this activity bus took us home. Back in that days, if I didn't want to ride the activity bus, I thumbed. I wouldn't want these kids doing that today. Once again, you know, um, always safety is an issue with these kids either walking home or, um, not being able to have a ride back to their, to their place. In the area, I did a little bit of research, both Fox Chapel and Seneca Valley are two of the school districts in our area that do have activity buses, and Franklin Regional is on par with both of those particular school districts. A lot of school districts in the east have these things. Who's going to talk next is my, my son-in-law, Stan. He was actually had an activity bus at Otterdice back in, back in his day, and that's basically what I'm looking for is for potentially an activity bus for these students in our, in our school district. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you, ref.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Stanley.
Thank you for adjusting that for my father-in-law to speak first. Um, you know, for me, Stanley Chain, one-ten Manor Road, Delmont, Pennsylvania. Uh, I have four daughters in this school district, um, so I have a large investment. I've, they're in all four different schools this year, uh, high school, middle school, primary school, and intermediate school. Uh, so we're running. Uh, our family runs a lot. Our kids want to be in everything. Uh, we want to give them every opportunity that we can, um, but I think that from a, just a logistics standpoint, and I realize not everybody has four, four kids in school at the same time, but, you know, from a logistics standpoint, it's nice to have, you know, my father-in-law, uh, that lives in the community and can give us a ride, but not everybody has that, uh, that opportunity and that help. So I think that an activities bus, you know, if it can be done, um, I'm sure that families within the district would be willing to pay a minimal fee also to offset costs if cost is an issue, but I think that it would be very well utilized. Um, you know, with me, I graduated in nineteen ninety-nine from Taylor Old Rice High School, um, and there was an activities bus. Uh, there were a lot of kids that did not have parents to give them a ride home. It gave a lot of those kids opportunity to participate in extracurricular activities. It's not just sports, it's clubs, it's, you know, everything that happens after school. So I think trying to, uh, keep well-rounded, uh, students, uh, engaged in the community is a good thing for any school district, um, and also, you know, taking a little bit of burden off of that parent that might be speeding down twenty-two to catch, you know, multiple schools for pickup. I think that's a safety issue, too. So, you know, it would, it would really give these kids just a little bit more comfort to be able to go, go home, especially if their parents can't pick them up afterwards. So that was, that's the request. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Stanley. Okay, Helen Elliott.
Good evening, and I'm just here tonight to.
Name and address, Helen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Helen Elliott, uh, three-one-six-six Chestnut Street in Murray. Us to come in and view some of the curriculum in her office, and I appreciate the time and all that she invested in that. And then I want to thank Mr. Sal, the, the Salvio, excuse me, Mr. Salvio, who organized, uh, and I don't know who else assisted her, maybe Dr. Delp with that, in doing the Naviance presentation to, um, to those of us who showed up that day. That was a very, very good presentation. It was well done, and, um, and it just gave a lot of wonderful information, so I am very appreciative of the work and effort that as well, so thank you for that. And, uh, and we did review the, um, IXL, the Bio Rad, and the Delta Math, and all looked good. We had some concerns at first about some of the books in one of the programs, but as we researched those a little bit more, we decided that they were going to be okay. And then the only thing I want to add to that is that the Naviance program, which was presented as going to be a wonderful asset to our guidance counselors, would help them a whole lot to make their jobs easier. Sounds good to me. Then, um, if I remember correctly, at the last board meeting, uh, it was suggested that, that we hire on another guidance counselor, so I'm kind of wondering why we need a guidance counselor if we're going to turn around and make the job easier for all the, uh, guidance counselors that we have already. So that's it. So thank you.
Thank you, Helen. Diane. Where's she?
Hello, hello. Hey, I'm Amy Sheridan, twenty-seven eighty-five Walker Court, and I'm the parent of an. We're good? Parent of an eleventh grader. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I just wanted to talk for a few minutes about preparing our students for the future. And I think when we think about the future, we, maybe it seems that a far-off time when the mortarboards have been stuffed in a drawer somewhere and have hung the tassel from a rearview mirror, but after two weeks at band camp, I would suggest that the future is closer than it would appear. The last two weeks, I've spent two or three hours a day at the high school. As the volunteer manager of the band uniform room, I've watched from the sidelines as a hundred and eighty students of varying talents, different needs, and diverse personalities became a team and worked together, all this to prepare for a performance this fall. And they also go through about two thousand popsicles, which they've earned very well. Sometimes when the band members pick up their uniforms, they talk about what they did this summer. What became clear to me during these conversations was that these high school students are already stepping into their futures. They're trying them on for size, and they have been well-prepared to do so by their time here at Franklin Regional. This summer, they're making pizza. They're stocking the grocery store. They're coaching younger students. They're taking extra classes over the summer, hoping to get ahead. Some spent summer nights at the robotics workshop. On Fall Friday nights, blue and gold FR band uniforms are going to be worn by kids who this summer wore volunteer firefighter gear. One young musician casually mentioned to me that for their internship, they were doing cancer research at a well-known local institution. They're amazing. They're only a small group of remarkable students, learning, developing thinking skills, working as a team, and growing in this community. We talk a lot, a lot about after they graduate, what will they be? Well, I'm, I'm just here to say that I'm lucky to have seen this week a sneak peek of their future, a future that's been created in the classrooms and the dinner tables of this town. These people, these young people exemplify the school's mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School Community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. So it's up to us to continue to look to the future as we create an educational environment and curriculum that hones their critical thinking skills and prepares them to both compete and join forces with their peers in Western Pennsylvania and all over the world. These students are ready for their futures, and there's no doubt they're going to make our community proud.
Thank you, Amy. Diane, is she, is she back there?
Diane Fairley. Were you just signing in, or did you want to make a public comment? Okay. No problem.
Crossed off. Thank you. Okay, that's the end of public comments. Solicitor's comments.
I have nothing for public session.
Thank you. We're going to move to consent agenda item. Dr. Rogowski, you're up for a while. Number one, Cleland Heights.
Yes, it seems as though I have about a third of the agenda items this evening, um, but hopefully I'll be quick. Uh, these are all, the first eight agenda items are all annual agreements that we have with fantastic partners and that we've had for twelve, fifteen-plus years. Uh, the first is with Cleland Heights School. Uh, the second is with the Greensburg-Salem School District. Uh, third is Longmore Academy. Uh, fourth is New Story. Uh, the fifth is the Watson Institute or the WISCA Program in Sharpsburg. Um, the, the sixth one is with AIU Three for Blind and Visual Support Services for students that would attend DePaul School for Hearing and Speech. Uh, the seventh one is with the Western Pennsylvania School for Blind Children. They provide, um, blind and visually impaired services within our school setting for students who are blind or visually impaired. And the last one is off-campus interpreting services. Uh, that would be for students that attend the school for the deaf and go to our CTC. Uh, they need that interpreting services to be able to meaningfully participate, um, in that shop or activity. Any questions about those eight agenda items?
Anybody have any questions? Dr. Rogowski? I'm Dr. Rogowski. Okay, number nine, Title Nine, or, I'm sorry, Dr. Smith.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not sure if I can follow up that, that type of speed, but I'll give it my best. Woo! Uh, we'll start out with a, an agreement with IU One to provide, uh, professional development services to Mother of Sorrows, and that is funded utilizing our Title Two funds at a little over sixty-eight hundred dollars. And, continue. And the second item would be, uh, annual agreement with the Southwestern Pennsylvania Human Services for Drug and Alcohol Case Management and Assessment Services. Uh, this is something that we do on an annual basis as well. Questions?
Any questions for Dr. Smith? Thank you, Dr. Smith. Okay. Dr. Jen.
Good evening. My item tonight is the Naviance platform, and that is our college and career K-to-12 platform that will have a student-facing, parent-facing, and staff-facing portal for all students to use as they move through kindergarten through twelfth grade in their career and college readiness activities.
Any questions for? Thank you. Dr. Delp, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. The first item I have for you, our first three items, were on previous thirty-day review. Uh, the IXL resource is a middle school, um, based resource for ELA. The Delta Math resource is a mathematics, um, digital platform, uh, for grades nine through twelve. And the Bio Rad curriculum, we're looking at the textbooks, um, that were going to be used for the new, um, bio, uh, technology course to be at the high school this year.
Any questions for Dr. Delp on twelve, three-fourteen?
I have a minor, minor comment, maybe. Well, first of all, the Bio Rad is rad. It is really, really exciting, and, um, I can't wait to have that implemented. Um, on, on another note, I'm not a real fan of IXL, and, um, I was wondering if next year we were going to be looking at some alternatives to IXL that are more engaging, rather than the, it, the research shows that it's a little bit boring for the kids, and they disengage from it.
I think after the implementation of this year, we certainly take a, an overall look at the efficacy of that program at the middle school and, um, see what kind of impact that it has on supplementing our curriculum. It does link to our Study Sync program, uh, which may be a little bit more of an engagement bridge, uh, versus an additional ad hoc, um, on-the-side type of enrichment or remediation program that might be being used in other school districts.
Okay, yeah, that's what I worry about is, is the, number one, the time that the teachers need to take to make it more engaging, um, and if there are other alternatives that could potentially be more engaging over the year, I'd, I'd like to look at those.
Any other questions? Okay, fifteen, St. Vincent College.
The next item on our list is an agreement that we have for two, uh, student, graduate students at St. Vincent College who would serve in a fellowship capacity, uh, within the district. Uh, this is an extension of a program that we had in place this year where we had one individual. Uh, this year, we have an agreement for two fellows to be participating in FR.
Any questions, Dr. Delp? Policy review.
The next item is a second read for Policies Zero-Zero Four on Membership, Policy One-O-eight on Adoption of Textbooks, Policy One-Thirty-seven, Home Education, Policy One-Thirty-seven-point-one, Extracurricular Participation by Home Education Students, Policy One-Thirty-seven-point-two, Participation in Co-Curricular Activities and Academic Courses by Home Education Students, and Policy One-Thirty-seven-point-three, Participation in Career and Technical Education Programs by Home Education Students.
Any questions for policy review? Thank you, Dr. Delp. Okay, Ms. Cow. Buses and van drivers.
Good evening. I have two items for your approval tonight. The first one is our twenty-three, twenty-four bus and van driver list for A.J. Myers and Sons.
Any questions on bus and van drivers?
And the second item was, under the administrative content, was our list of bus stops for the new school year.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Matzie, change orders.
Good evening, everyone. The first item is a change order for a credit for environmental signage up at the primary and intermediate property.
Any questions on the environmental signs? Next, change order.
Another change order from Snyder Environmental. This was a motion to, uh, for a change order with a savings of twenty thousand, roughly almost twenty-one thousand dollars on the sewer line project.
Any questions on the sewer line projects? Haymaker Run. Excellent.
Haymaker Run Project. This is a, a motion to be, to commit five thousand dollars towards the haymaker project upon receipt of the DEP grant.
We also learned that that grant was awarded. We learned that on Friday, and that was in my update to you. And so, uh, the total cost of that project is around forty, forty-six thousand, and so, covered through that grant as well as contribution from, from the Murray's Water Shed Association.
The work will be done at the end of August.
Thank you. Okay, WSS.
WSS, this is for. This is being paid through a safety security grant. It's for license plate recognition cameras.
Questions on license plate recognition cameras? Okay.
And the next item is from Technologies, um, it's a servers upgrade. We did one, if you remember, a little while ago. This is to do the other three, and this is also being paid by the Safety and Security Grant.
Any questions on technology server upgrade? Allegheny Safe and Lock Door Sensors.
These would be door sensors on the exterior doors at the high school and the middle school, so when they're, if they're propped open, they'll be ringing, uh, at the door, and they'll be sending an alarm off to Chief Scoog's office.
Thank you, Mr. Matzie.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Perry.
Good evening. Uh, the first item I have for you tonight is the annual approval of a medic one's proposal to provide standby medic services for athletic events and on-call service, uh, for the district during the school day.
Any questions about the medic one contract? Gifts, grants, and donations?
This month, we have two-hundred-and-thirty dollars to the district's fund-a-meal program from FR staff, and a five-hundred-dollar donation from the Harstrop family for, um, food service, student lunch debt.
Questions on gift grants and donations? Budget transfers?
This month, we have general. Basis. It's not unusual for this time of year. These are related to year-end accounting items and, um... These are related to year-end accounting items and aligning expenditures with the appropriate funding sources such as IDEA, things that we don't necessarily know where the expenditures are going to be funded when we put the budget together 14 or 15 months ago, so.
Okay, any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Delp, back up with personnel.
The attachments are the list of personnel items to be provisionally approved upon submission of appropriate documentation, including clearances, and those documents required by Child Protective Service Law and PA School Code.
Any questions on personnel for Dr. Delp? Personnel agenda additions.
This is the additional personnel agenda item that was presented at the beginning of this meeting, today's meeting, by Mr. Mata.
Any questions? Take a separate vote in at the end of the meeting then. Okay. Thank you. All right, I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved.
Moved, Ed. Second, Diana. Okay, anybody have any problem with us going straight into the meeting? We're going to call it ordered Monday, the August 14, 2023 Franklin Regional Board of School Directors' Regular Meeting at the Municipal Building. Will Stanford salute the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, reading of the mission statement. "We, the Franklin Regional School Community strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do." Do a roll call again? Roll call.
Mr. Krimsky?
Here.
Mr. Kizlosky?
Here.
Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Mitterator?
Here.
Mr. Weinman?
Here.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Here.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Here.
Mr. Yangling?
Here.
Mr. Hannah is absent this evening.
Okay, I need approval of minutes for the committee of the whole meeting for June 19, 2023, and a regular meeting of June 19, 2023. Need a motion?
So moved.
Moved, Ed.
Second.
Second.
Scott.
Scott. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight zero. Reports and upcoming information.
Future dates include September 6. There will be a curriculum committee meeting at 5:00 PM at the administrative offices. On September 13, 2023, the policy committee will meet at 5:00 PM at the administrative offices. And on September 18, we will have our committee of the whole and regular board meeting at 7:30 PM here at the Murraysville Municipal Building.
Thank you.
Upcoming topics include annual agreements, personnel, gifts, grants, and donations. And that concludes upcoming dates and future topics.
Thank you. All right, I need a motion to approve the treasures report for June and July of 2023.
So moved.
Moved, Scott.
Second.
Second, Vince. Questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. Okay, list of bills. Paid bills, general fund, $601,022.3 for total paid bills, $601,262, $621,262.3. Unpaid bills, general fund, $701,749.52. Capital reserve fund, $50,060. $0.50. Construction fund, $187,816 for total of unpaid bills of $959,796.62. For grand total of $1,561,058.65, food services zero. For grand total, including food service, of $1,561,058.65. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion marked.
Second.
Second, Ed. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. We have no public comments for the voting meeting. Solicitors' comments?
Nothing for public session, Mr. President.
Okay, consent agenda items to be removed for separate action by board members. Vince?
Yeah, motion for item 28, be voted on separately.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I need a motion to approve consent agenda items one through 27. Moved, Diana?
Second.
Second, Mark. Comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight zero. 28 was pulled. I'll explain why that was pulled.
I'd like to abstain from voting.
You got it. All right. We need a roll call vote on-
I'll make a motion to approve item 28.
We need a roll call vote. A second motion?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kizlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
I abstain.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Yangling?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion carries seven, with one abstention. Okay, personnel agenda, Dr. Delp.
Yes, this is the item to be pulled separately that was added by Mr. Mata at the beginning of the previous meeting.
Any questions?
I'll motion to approve-
Mark must approve, I need a second.
Second.
Second, Vince. Comments? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Krimsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kizlosky?
Yes.
Mr. Azalina?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterator?
Yes.
Mr. Weinman?
Yes.
Dr. Eshelman-Ramey?
Yes.
Ms. Alteri Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Yangling?
Yes.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Mark, courtesy, thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.